Number 5.1, update on citywide minimum wage. Michelle DeGussman. Okay. Oh, I don't know. Okay, there we go. I didn't realize that it would lock. Control alt delete on this. Where's the beep? Sorry, the computer wasn't locked when the room minutes ago. Okay, and I don't know what that, there we go. Okay, it's fine, run away. Thank you very much. I apologize for the minor technical difficulties. Thank you, Mayor Asher and members of the Emeryville City Council. I'm Michelle DeGussman. I'm with the Economic Development and Housing Division of the Community Development Department. I'm here to speak to you tonight about an update on a citywide minimum wage for the city of Emeryville. There are existing policies already in the city of Emeryville addressing wage. We have two. One is Measure C, which was an initiative that was passed by the voters in 2005. It does address minimum compensation for hotel employees. It's limited to that sector of the economy. And it has additional portions of it which address employer protections if there's a change of management, as well as workload parameters for room cleaners. So it's not strictly a minimum wage policy. Under this, under Measure C, the minimum compensation in 2005 was $9 per hour. And the initiative required that it be increased by the local CPI. In our case, the local CPI is the San Francisco, Oakland, San Jose Metropolitan Statistical Area CPI. So it's currently $11.08. Shortly after Measure C was passed, the city also adopted a living wage ordinance in 2006. And that applied to employees of and contractors with the city. At that time, the initial living wage was $12 per hour, also increased by the local CPI, and it currently sits at $14.03. At the time, back in 2006, when the living wage was being considered, it was being considered actually as a larger comprehensive wage policy. In light of Measure C, the living wage, and at that time, the council did look at a citywide minimum wage. And the sort of larger concept that the council was looking at was livable wages. The idea is that in the Bay Area, we have a higher cost of living than might be found under the federal minimum wage. And what are ways that could be addressed through, potentially through policy? And at that time, you know, there's different ways of looking at it. Conceptually, you could see the federal minimum wage as zero, as one, and what percentage of the, what percentage higher is our cost of living indexed to that? You could also back into it, seeing what it costs a family or a household to live here, and then back out what wage would be required in order to support your basic housing needs, you know, housing costs, transportation, childcare, food costs. The two reports that were done back in 2006 are attached to the written staff report. And this sort of summarizes the major findings as a result of those. One was that there were likely to be increased administrative costs for oversight and enforcement. The amount of costs would be dependent on the type of enforcement. If you wanted to do a proactive enforcement model, which I'll talk about a little bit later, which is what Measure C is, or if you want to have an enforcement model that would be based more on violations and complaints, which is how our living wage ordinance actually functions. At the time in 2006, there was a concern that businesses would relocate to nearby cities that would not have a citywide minimum wage. Again, this was 2006, so certainly Berkeley didn't have its minimum wage at that time, and it wasn't as widely discussed, a regional issue. Also at the time, of the 13 major employment clusters that were in Emeryville, only the hospitality sector had an average minimum wage below the self-sufficiency standard. And that was largely going to be addressed by the wage increases by, through Measure C. And also, at the largest component in the Bay Area that tends to drive up our overall cost of living is high housing costs. And the city has had a very aggressive affordable housing program. And one of the ways was to continue to enact that, of course, since that time, there've been, that affordable housing program was largely supported by the redevelopment In 2006, the, with respect specifically to the citywide minimum wage, the staff recommendation was to defer consideration of the citywide minimum wage until Measure C and the living wage were in place a sufficient amount of time to determine the administrative burden of implementing those measures. However, if staff, this is again back in 2006, still wished to pursue it further, sorry, if the council wished to pursue it further. Staff further recommended providing, asking council to provide some directions for parameters of a citywide minimum wage, the wage rates, business size thresholds, you know, wage rate for businesses with 25 or more employees, and 24 or fewer exclusions, if there were to be any, part-time, seasonal nonprofits. Also, staff recommended issuing an RFP to hire consultants who would evaluate the fiscal and economic impacts of that, because at the time, there were very few that were in place. So there was very little known about the potential impacts of those. And also considering it as a ballot initiative to supplant Measure C, so that there would only be one, single enforcement of a citywide minimum wage, which is not part of the consideration here. This is just recounting the discussion that occurred in 2006. At the time, council concurred with the staff recommendation to defer consideration. It has now been eight years. And so we looked at the time that has been spent just in, we looked at the last fiscal year. Measure C, when it was initially put in place, had quite a lot of litigation associated with it. And so the amount of city attorney time that was related to that was unusual relative to the sort of ongoing implementation of that. So we looked at the last year where there was, there's no ongoing litigation associated with that. For the living wage ordinance, the major departments that were responsible for that are Human Resources and the City Attorney's Office. And the tasks for that are primarily updating the rates on an annual basis and putting them through our process to officially update them, as well as updating the contrast on an annual basis. It takes approximately about six hours of those two departments combined. And violations are handled on a complaint basis, and we haven't received any complaints under this. So we don't have any information as to how long it would take us to investigate. And through the duration of the living wage ordinance, we haven't had a violation. So we don't have the information on how long it takes our staff to investigate and resolve complaints. Measure C is primarily involved by the, managed by the Finance Department and the City Attorney's Office, primarily with the Finance Department. Measure C is a much more proactive measure in that the hotels have to submit payroll data and submit other information that has to be reviewed actively by our Finance Department. If anything's missing, Finance has to pursue it and field inquiries through the year, as well as issue the permits. And so that's about 20 hours, 22 hours of time. And in terms of violations, it's not complaint-based. You don't get the permit unless you meet the requirements of the ordinance. So all told, there's somewhat minimal time related to the living wage ordinance, but you know, the, this missing piece still is the violation enforcement, which we haven't had to enact. So that's what's been happening with Emeryville. Currently, there's been quite a lot of legislation and activity around minimum wages. There are several proposals at the federal level. There is currently a proposal that's meeting some opposition. At the state level, there is currently a proposal that has passed through the Senate, and it's currently in the Assembly in committee. And locally, both Oakland and San Francisco have citywide minimum wage policies that will be, that are scheduled to be on the November 2014 ballot. Approved minimum wages. At the time in 2006, the District of Columbia, Santa Fe, Albuquerque, and San Francisco were the only cities in the country that had a citywide minimum wage approved. Since that time, in 2012, San Jose also had a citywide minimum wage that was approved through ballot initiative. And recently, this year, there's been, there've been an additional, several cities that have added approval of citywide minimum wages, Berkeley, Richmond, San Diego, and Seattle. And then the last item is that Oakland, the City Council President and the Chamber of Commerce, had developed an alternative minimum wage proposal to the one that was proposed by Lift Up Oakland that's currently on the ballot. And that did not, that was not passed by the Oakland City Council. So I'm going to-
Can I ask you a quick question on that slide? Which is, the recently passed minimum wage approvals, were those done by ordinance? Or by vote, I assume, by ordinance?
All of those were by ordinance, yes. And San Jose, San Francisco, I don't remember San Francisco, but San Jose was by ballot measure, by initiative. I'm not really going to talk about the numbers on this. I just sort of wanted to put this out there. I have a, I have a graph on the following page. But this table shows the specific numbers that are associated with both the past and proposed way, minimum, citywide minimum wages that I discussed. And just the green ones are ones that are the proposals. And mostly, I just have this, if you want to ask detailed questions about actual wage rates, because I made a line graph. And there's a lot of the line graph, too. But I took out the federal, because it's not really germane to our discussion. But just to sort of explain what's going on with this graph. The numbers that you, the lines that you see that are dashed are the proposals. And Seattle is on here. It's not in the Bay Area, or even, say, in California. But the reason it's on here is because their citywide minimum wage is the highest that has been passed, and they are that pink line. Although, I should note, that is for employers that have more than 500 employees. That's more than 500 employees in the United States, so that's meant to address change, not just 500 employees in Seattle. But the one that is for less than 500 is this sort of light purply line for Seattle. So you can see they're sort of, they're sort of on the lower end, and then they spike up eventually to get to the $15. All of these that you sort of see with a gentle slope, those go up based on CPI. Ones that are like this, or sort of at an odd angle, those are the ones that are being dictated by the, by either the initiative or the ballot, by the ordinance. The green here is San Francisco. San Francisco's existing is this green one right here. It marches up just by CPI. Sorry, this one here. A little shaky hand there. And then this dashed green is San Francisco's proposed. And this is the Oakland Lift Up proposal that's going to be on the ballot measure. And for comparison, this is Emeryville right here. This is Measure C. So that again applies only to the hotel industry. And the other one that is of interest that I was about to say? Now I lost my train of thought.
Berkeley's, maybe?
Berkeley's, yes. Thank you. That's exactly what I was trying. So Berkeley is here, and so they go here, and then it flattens out, because their ordinance does not include a CPI escalator. So I don't know if they're going to adjust it later in time. But as you can see, this is the state. And typically, before the citywide minimum wages started going in, for the most part, minimum wage is adjusted by law, by ordinance. So it just sort of goes up in these lock steps. The federal minimum wage looks similar. And so that's sort of, I can go through all of them, but-
Before you go on, can I just ask a couple of questions about our hotels? I believe at least two of the four are now, have been organized.
I don't know that specifically, is that?
That's true.
That's true. And do you know what salaries they're now getting paid? Because I'd have to believe it's not the Measure C salaries that we set.
That I don't know. I mean, I know certainly Measure C provides that if they are organized pursuant to a, you know, a contract, then they're not subject to the provisions of Measure C. So, but why they would negotiate for something less than what's in Measure C-
That's what I'm saying. I'm sure it's more than this, but it'd be interesting to hear what those wages are now in those hotels, as a comparison.
And in fact, the most recently organized one, they just finished their contract, was it last week or two weeks ago, I think? So finished negotiating that. So that's the, and the Woodfin struggle has ended with a collective bargaining agreement there.
Well, I was going to say, if all four were organized, then we wouldn't have to worry about Measure C, right?
That's right.
Our administrative costs.
Well, that's two out of four.
Getting there.
Getting there.
Good for Emeryville.
Okay, so this is-
I can just add, for the Marriott, they've chosen, the last I knew, they've chosen to pay their workers the time and a half rate that would otherwise kick in if they had, if you followed Measure C, if you cleaned so, you know, more than so many rooms, then the time and a half rate kicks in. So that's one of the big, you know, issues with Measure C, is trying to track people's time and how many square feet they clean, et cetera, et cetera. So the Marriott has chosen, we don't even want to bother having to keep track of that. We're just going to pay all of our workers the time and a half rate, which is, I believe it's around $16 an hour. I'm not sure what the report says, but it's somewhere in there. So that's what the Marriott has chosen to do, just pay them time and a half rate and not have to worry about all the documentation.
You mean at their regular hours, not for extra hours?
Correct.
A time and a half rate is $20.34. Okay.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Thank you. So that concludes my summary of current and previous activities related to the citywide minimum wage. And the next steps are, staff seeks direction from the council if you wish to further evaluate the impacts of establishing a citywide minimum wage in Emeryville. If that is the case, staff will return with an analysis that includes the items that are there enumerated. I don't think you want me to read them off the slide. But also, if there are other items that you wish, we'll look at a larger scope than this, but if there's anything specific that the council, in pursuing this concept, wants staff to address, we'll certainly, we'll include that as well. Thank you, Michelle.
Mayor Asher, could we hear from the public?
Yeah. Any public comment on this item at this time?
Yeah, Ken Bukowski, I always wondered why the Department of Labor wouldn't be the enforcement arm. I mean, they're the people you complain to when you're not getting the appropriate wage. And I don't know why they wouldn't be the party in this case. Thanks.
Good evening, Mayor Asher and council members. My name is Chris Daly, and I am the political director of SEIU Local 10 to 1. Also served three terms on the San Francisco Board of Supervisors. Was the main author of San Francisco's first-in-the-country Paid Sick Days ordinance, and was a primary co-sponsor of San Francisco's current minimum wage. SEIU Local 10 to 1 has been a founding member of the Lift Up Oakland Coalition. We also are a founding member of the Campaign for a Fair Economy that worked on the preparation of the minimum wage proposal, which is on the ballot in November in San Francisco. And I'm not sure if this will pick it up on the overhead, but I prepared a simpler line graph for you on regional minimum wage proposals that I think are most relevant for you here in the city of Emeryville. And I picked San Francisco, Oakland, and Berkeley. And so if you can see from this, you have a very robust proposal in San Francisco. It actually does have a CPI inflator on it after it hits $15 in 2018. So it does go up, and it is actually stronger than Seattle's current minimum wage law. The Lift Up Oakland proposal goes to 1225 next year, and then has a CPI increase. It also includes paid sick days, which is existing law in San Francisco. And Berkeley just falls flat. And so for my former regional government colleague, Mayor Tom Bates, who talks about a regional approach, we in SEIU, we agree with a regional approach. We just agree with a strong regional approach, and not the approach that the city of Berkeley has taken. And if I could, we have not formed the proposal yet, but the purple line there is what my vote is in our Berkeley coalition for the measure that we're going to move on the 2016 ballot, which you see tracks San Francisco is more aggressive than the Oakland proposal. And just to give you some perspective, the Richmond minimum wage, which we think has some serious shortcomings in terms of carve-outs, exemptions, complicated, different tier structures, you know, credits for healthcare, an intermediate wage, which is a bit bizarre, we were not completely satisfied with that. So we are on the street today in the city of Richmond, collecting signatures. I think we're a little more than halfway to qualifying, basically, the Oakland proposal in Richmond for a special election early next year in the city of Richmond. Of course, we'll be asking the Richmond City Council to go ahead and adopt that and avoid a special election. We would call on you, the leaders here in Emeryville, to follow the lead and to make sure that you don't cause complications in terms of the Oakland proposal, and put forward a strong minimum wage measure.
Thank you, Mr. Daly.
Thank you very much.
Anyone else?
Thank you, Chris. And I am Shum Preston with Raise the Bay, which is SEIU 10 to 1's regional effort to raise the minimum wage in the Bay Area. This is our proposal for Emeryville, and it's pretty straightforward, because we think Emeryville could and should adopt the Oakland proposal. There's so much similarity to the point where you guys, I believe, co-own a mall together, that it seems like the workers should earn the same rates. As you see, our proposal, following the Emeryville proposal, has, following the Oakland proposal, has lift up the Emeryville ballot measure or legislation going to 1225 in 2015, 1258, we presume in 2016, because it follows CPI after that. So you can see, it goes to 1292 and 1327. Couple of other important points about this. One, we strongly feel that because this is a moral issue, an issue of human rights, an issue of poverty, there should be no exemptions. There's no work that deserves to be paid less than the minimum wage. There's no worker who should be carved out, who should be exempted, who should be paid less than folks down the street. Secondly, we believe that CPI is imperative to make this progressive legislation, moral legislation forever, not just for a couple of years, until inflation catches up. Third, we strongly believe that paid sick days are, must be part of any minimum wage proposal. The idea that we would have food service workers ill, going to work while serving food to customers is just kind of gross. Moreover, we know that on, you know, just trying to make it in our high-cost, our high-cost economy out here, workers go to work sick, workers go to work with their kids sick. This is a moral failing that we should be correcting. So at the end of the day, we think it's fair to workers, fair to businesses, and good for Emeryville. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
So I'm remembering back in 2006, when the E-Base, or the East Bay Alliance for Sustainable Economy, came and proposed Measure C. Remember, it was three to two on the council. There are two council members that supported the Measure C, living wage for hotel workers, and then three were against it. I remember the two that were in favor was Councilmember John Fricki and Councilwoman Ruth Atkins were in favor of it. And the three that were against it were pretty radically against it. That was Councilmember Davis, Nora Davis. Councilmember Ken Bukowski was against it, as was Councilmember Dick Cassis. I remember Councilmember Davis telling those of us that came and spoke in favor of it, she called us dupes for E-Base, which I thought was not well-advised. I didn't appreciate it being called a dupe. As it turns out, the people of Emeryville, I guess were the majority of dupes here in town, because it passed swimmingly, as you remember, very well, very popular among the people in Emeryville, just not here in the council chambers. Moving ahead here now, I listened to the two gentlemen, Mr. Daly speak and the other gentleman, and I got to say, I agree. And I think what we should do before we move forward on this is we need to get more advice. And I think you should solicit the advice of the E-Base, since they were instrumental in writing the living wage ordinance that we do have, the Measure C. And so I think we should solicit their advice, and I'm sure it's along the lines of the Lift Up Emeryville. I wanted to piggyback about the fast food. Emeryville, this council has approved just a plethora of fast food here in Emeryville. I mean, that's, we're, I mean, arguably a fast food alley here. We have a lot of fast food that this town, this council has okayed. And it is sort of incumbent upon us now to protect the public by making sure that the fast food workers get sick pay, and so they don't, you know, it's a public safety, public health and safety issue. But I think we should reject the Tom Bates model, and we should go for the regional approach, and we should go for a more, a more moral model, and we should follow our neighbors in San Francisco and what sounds like is happening in Oakland. So I invite you to, I think you should solicit the advice of E-Base and have them come and make a presentation. That's what I would recommend. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
And then we'll be hearing from Bob Cantor next, telling us why the whole town will crash if we do this. Bob?
Anyone next?
Hi, before I start, what's the process for handing handout?
The city clerk, please.
I have six, one for each council member and one for you for record-keeping purposes. Hello, honorable city council members of Emeryville. My name is Matthew Lewis, and I am the Local Affairs Director from the Associate Students of the University of California. And we're here to speak in favor of a strong minimum wage. So as a lot of people have recently spoken, what happened in Berkeley was, we didn't get the strongest minimum wage that we want, and it was like, a lot of stuff went really bad, and like, we didn't get a CPI, which is going to mean, as you saw, that wages will stay flat. And a lot of students were, both shop and work in Emeryville, which means that they, that this measure will direct, have a direct impact on the welfare of a lot of students. And so we, and so therefore, we think it's really important that you, that you do a strong minimum wage. Additionally, we want to point out that because the city of Berkeley is so small, that we can't do all of our shopping needs, and so a lot of students go into Oakland and to Emeryville. And so we kind of want to issue a challenge to the city of Emeryville, which is that, as you saw, Oakland did a much higher minimum wage than Berkeley did. And so what our challenge is, is that if you will pass a strong minimum wage, we will work to make sure that each incoming first year, and incoming grads as soon as well, they have a, normally, they would figure out on their own Oakland is where their shopping needs are, and then they maybe have that, it's where they go for four years, or Emeryville is. And so if Emeryville passes a strong minimum wage, we're going to work to make sure that students are being taught, when they're coming in, that Emeryville is where, like, the best needs-meet-your-shopping stuff is. Like, that's where Staples is, for example. And so that's our, essentially, our, is like, that's where I've gone generally for, sometimes for Staples and the store. And then I since realized there was a closer one, but, but that's definitely where I go for Best Buy, for example. And so that's our challenge. And essentially, the stronger minimum wage that you pass, the stronger we're going to work for that. But it's kind of the same, on the flip side as well, if Oakland passes a stronger, has a stronger minimum wage, we're kind of going to feel we want our students shopping there. But at the same time, I think Emeryville, because this is something, it's not going for the ballot, on the ballot, like, you have an option to pass a strong minimum wage, and we really want to work with Emeryville. Like, Emeryville has things that Oakland doesn't have, like, it has a nice bus system that is provided by the, by the business association. That's one of the first things I noticed. And so we really do want to be, Emeryville to be a partner in this, and that's why we really want to be able to do that, because Emeryville is primarily for us as students, where we go to shop, and it's all, and so that's why we issue this challenge. We really want a strong minimum wage, and we thank you and your support. So thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else to speak on this item?
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Asher, and council members. Bob Cantor with the Emeryville Chamber of Commerce. I want to thank that young man who just spoke. We love the Berkeley shoppers who come in Emeryville. I had Professor Robert Reich tell me personally that he shops in Emeryville. We love it. And as a member of the Board of Directors of the ETMA, the Emery Ground Governing Body, I have advocated that we extend the Emery Ground Service, this is just me speaking, nobody else, into downtown Berkeley, so we can help increase the traffic from there. And I'm seriously proposing that. We had a Board of Directors meeting just yesterday at the chamber, and this issue was discussed. We did not come, we have no official position, the board did not come to any resolution. did not come, we have no official position. The board did not come to any resolution. So I have no official position. However, some items were raised that I just want to share with you. One is the enforcement. Ken Bukowski mentioned maybe the state labor commission should enforce it. Maybe it's not a bad idea. We had another comment that I believe there's an initiative at the, in the state legislature, a bill in the legislature that would increase the minimum wage. That would be statewide. I don't know how much it is. The locals might be higher. But there's, that might be a way to go, is to have a statewide increase. And there is a bill in the legislature, or bills, that's another one. The enforcement is an issue. Michelle did a little summary of what the enforcement has been like with Measure C and the living wage ordinance, but that only applies to four hotels and contractors with the city. This would be everybody. So, and finally, who you're not hearing from, you heard from Mr. Daley and Mr. Donahue and everybody else, you're not hearing from the businesses who would have to pay this and the effect on them. You're going to. The Oakland Chamber of Commerce had an alternative measure that was considered by the Oakland City Council, but failed on a five to three vote, by the way. It did get some support. It was an alternative to that, I think it's called lift up or something. The Oakland Chamber did propose a higher minimum wage than the federal and the state. So it was higher, just not as high as the lift up one. That was, that was defeated just by a five to three vote. So it got some support on the Oakland City Council. So again, we were not in favor of or supportive of anything. We don't, the board did not come to resolution. Just want to raise these issues with you. And you're not hearing from the businesses that would have to pay the increase, and what effect it would have on them. And you will be hearing that if, assuming this proceeds, which I expect is going to, you'll be hearing from that, them in the future. Thanks so much.
Anyone else on this item?
Good evening, council members. My name is Larry Bradshaw. I'm a paramedic in San Francisco, and prior to that, I worked as a paramedic in Oakland. And on occasion, we'd run backup calls in Emeryville and Berkeley when your fire service was out. And I got to witness the daily struggle of the working poor, trying to survive on minimum wage, their inability to afford housing, inability to afford prescription medications, inability to afford transportation, let alone childcare, earning the niceties of life. It is a, someone said moral, I'll call it a moral crime, that someone can work full-time on the minimum wage and make less than $20,000 a year. That's, you cannot survive anywhere in this country on that, let alone the Bay Area. Our experience with the chamber, I'm glad they haven't taken a position yet, but in every, we're in touch with people all over the state who are launching minimum wage ballot measures, because the states are not acting, the federal government is not acting. So it's really becoming a municipality movement. The chamber always says, you go too far, you go too fast. They're saying that in San Diego, where the proposal's only 9:25 an hour. So whatever will be proposed, I guarantee the chamber will come up and say, wow, that's too far, that's too fast. But really, 15 is, I think we all know, is not enough to survive. But 15 is a good place to start. Let's build in the COLA, let's build in the sick days, let's build in, you know, the private right of action. If you're worried about the enforcement clause, what we have in a number of our measures throughout the Bay Area is a private right of action, where employees themselves can take the employer to court for not meeting the minimum wage. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else on this item? No? No? Okay. Did you want to?
Yeah.
I want to hear from council?
I want to say something as someone sitting here who has some longevity about our two current wage policies. And first of all, Measure C, as Michelle did mention, includes workload standards. It's not just about a wage thing. So it was a far broader measure. And I do want to correct the record that at the time, there was one candidate for city council and one city council member who supported Measure C. John Fricki had not been elected yet, until after Measure C passed. So one thing about this discussion that I didn't see in any of the staff reports or in any of the SEIU materials I just got is a justification for the numbers that are being thrown about. And I, and why this number and not that number. As a principle, I support doing something on a regional basis. And I asked the staff to prepare a little chart based on the number of people in a household and what the hourly rate would be for a full-time minimum wage earner to reach the federal poverty level. When the term minimum wage was first coined, it was to be equal to what the federal poverty level was defined as. And there are gross things, factors of the federal poverty level that don't actually take into account why the necessities of life and what people need to live in. So that's why, and that's how the living wage movement got started, because they knew minimum wage wasn't sufficient. But I just wanted to say, to meet federal poverty guidelines, for a four-person household, the hourly rate would have to be $11.47 for one full-time income earner. And the reason why the federal poverty level is important is because that's a measure that's used a lot for determining eligibility for various social welfare programs. And so, for example, our, under the Affordable Care Act, aka Obamacare, the, in California, Medicaid has expanded to 138% of the federal poverty level for Medicaid eligibility. So the question, the policy question that I put before my colleagues is, do we want to try to keep people off of welfare roles? We've all heard stories of certain large retailers whose employee, employees are on Medicaid and are on other kinds of public programs because they don't pay enough to live on. So I think that's the first policy decision, is do we want to be known as a community that keeps people self-sufficient enough that they don't need government programs? To me, that would be a really good definition of what a minimum wage is. The question of what a living wage is then only goes up from there. But I totally support the idea of raising the floor of poverty, because income disparity is just an abomination in this country, and the wealth gap is just increasing. The question is, is how to do it? And do we just jump on a bandwagon of some numbers that are thrown out, or are they based on something? So I'd like to invite the two SEIU folks, if you want to come back up and talk about why you picked the numbers that you did, I certainly would like to hear that. But I think the first policy decision is, do we want to make sure we keep people out of poverty and being eligible for, for different kinds of public assistance programs? Food stamps, Medicaid are two main ones. In-home supportive services for non-medical help at home is another program that's means-tested at this point. So I think we should talk about that.
Mayor, go ahead.
I was just going to say, I too have that similar question, because Senator Mark Leno has a bill at $12 an hour for statewide. And if it's $12, he's from San Francisco. And I see where yours is 1225. So I mean, it seemed like it'd be really nice if that bill could, if everything could match, you're only off a quarter, you got the CPI. So what was the thought process of, here's the state at $12, and here's other people 1225 with only a quarter?
Could you please come forward? Yes, thank you.
So I think, as everyone knows, SEIU has been working with fast food workers across the country over the last year to year and a half in a campaign called a Fight for 15. And I think a year and a half ago, when the Fight for 15 started, 15 was seen as pie in the sky. But what $15 was, was I believe the 19, could be off a year or two, but the 1973 minimum wage, if it had been adjusted for the cost of living. And so it became a rallying cry. You know, we wanted to move a $15 an hour minimum wage in Oakland, but when we were crafting the measure, we didn't think that $15 was going to be supported politically. We now, we now have polling that indicates that, you know, $15, you know, stepped up like the San Francisco measure. It's very popular. And in San Francisco, the measure was, which is a step down to $15, almost no exemptions in the measure. Keep in mind that San Francisco already requires earned sick time, five days for smaller businesses, up to nine bank days for larger businesses, and a healthcare mandate called Healthy San Francisco. So there are significant requirements on employers in San Francisco that, you know, we don't see in many other places. But in San Francisco, the pathway to 15 in 2018 is now supported by Mayor Ed Lee, 11 members of the Board of Supervisors. And while the San Francisco Chamber of Commerce has not taken a position, they have, they have spoken basically in favor of that compromise measure moving forward. The reason why is because San Franciscans are ready to vote for $15 next year. I think in Berkeley, the voters there are willing to vote for $15 next year. In Oakland, it's maybe closer to 50/50, and I would assume that the Emeryville electorate is similar to that in terms of 15 right now, no exceptions, Chamber of Commerce fighting it. But in some respects, 1225 was a deliberation amongst members of the Lift Up Oakland Coalition. Some of us were pushing for bigger numbers, some folks were pushing for a more graduated approach. It was, it was a compromise.
I just, I was just really interested, because that bill, I believe, passed the Senate. So it looks like it probably will become law for the state of California.
We wish.
I mean, it should be.
It did not receive the votes it needed in the Assembly to pass out. And ironically, one key vote that was not there for it was the sponsor of last year's minimum wage bill. I think that he had made some commitments around that. But I think that you'll see a new statewide minimum wage legislation. Not sure if it will be from Senator Leno or not. That probably will come up in the next session.
Good question. Go ahead.
I support what both Ruth and Kurt are talking about in terms of raising the policy to raise the minimum wage to a level where it takes people off the, the public programs. I think we have to take a look at that. I am not as concerned about what the state and the feds are doing, because these guys are dragging their heels. They're not looking at the future. They're not looking at what is existing now. And we're face-to-face with it. The young fellow who was a paramedic, when he talked about the people that he ran into and the really bad conditions that some people are working on. So I think we have to move ahead with that basic policy. But that being said, I think we also, as a city, we're a very, very small city. We have to be very careful about how this is administered and pursued. And we already have Measure C, and we have the living wage. I'd like to see us take a look at, is there a way we can eliminate all the different ones and have one minimum wage that would encompass everything? To do that, we'd have to go back to the voters, because Measure C was voted on. But I think there's a, that there should be a strong push there. I understand, Ruth, that Measure C has additional things beside, besides the minimum wage. But there may be another way to handle that. What I'm looking for is to raise the minimum wage, to get, get that moving forward, but to be very, very careful about the demands that it puts on this city in terms of creating a bureaucracy to administer it. We've had pretty good fortune with the, the living wage, because it's complaint-driven. And I would hope when staff comes back, they would give us some real meat behind that idea.
Yeah.
And I'd like to find out more about the private right of action as well.
And then we have to find out, when can we go to the ballot? If we can get something crafted, when would be the earliest time we could go to the ballot?
But we can do it by ordinance, can't we?
Well, we could do it by ordinance, but to really consolidate Measure C, Measure C and the living wage under the minimum wage, we have to go back to the ballot.
Go ahead, Jennifer.
I appreciate all the comments, actually, that I've heard from my colleagues this evening, and glad to hear enthusiasm for looking into this. I feel the same way. And to kind of go in reverse order, I'm not sure that I, I think it's important to craft a minimum wage ordinance or a ballot measure to align with Measure C. I think Measure C, right now, has minimal staff time, and it's specific to that industry in terms of the work standards that Ruth raised as well. So, and, and if we crafted a minimum wage ordinance that was equal to, or even higher than, it seems like it would supersede it. We wouldn't have to take it to the ballot. I don't, I mean, staff will come back to us with more information, but I'm interested in looking at this as an ordinance of the city council as well. And I think it's, it's kind of an amazing confluence and, and moment to consider this, looking at what's going on regionally and nationally. So I would be in favor of aligning with neighboring cities and appreciate the comparison with Oakland and Berkeley and how different those measures are. So it's hard to align with all of them, clearly, because they don't agree. I would like to see us avoid exclusions and exceptions. I know the San Francisco ordinance does that as well. I know folks talk about the hardship on small businesses and training programs. But again, I, I see the moral imperative of where we're living and how much it costs, and the importance to have a floor that everyone can live with. It was also raised with Measure C, but others, the collective bargaining exclusion makes sense, and I would agree with that as well. The paid sick days, I guess is not a part of Lift Up Oakland, as I understand it. Or is it?
It is.
It is. Okay. I, I think that's critical as well, and would like to see staff analyze that for us as well. And with the CPI adjustment, I think that's a no-brainer. I don't know why any of these would not have a CPI adjustment at this point. It seems like you're setting yourself up for the next fight there.
Right.
I don't know anything about private right of action, and would like to hear more about that, because I feel like the enforcement issue is the biggest one for us as a small city. And part of the interest, I think, that Tom Bates raised with the regional measure is, let's, let's also look regionally at the enforcement. Well, that's a great idea, but I think staff is going to have to analyze, what does that look like, and how, how could that be implemented in a way that makes sense for Emeryville? If our goal is to take people off of public programs and public assistance, which I think is admirable, I think it's going to be a much higher wage than we're seeing in any of the neighboring jurisdictions. I don't know, you're talking about 138% of federal poverty level is eligible for Medicaid. So it, I mean, these numbers, you know, I, I look at the numbers they were looking at for these minimum wages, the 1225, and we were given a chart to compare with this Alameda County AMI and the state limits. And I'm familiar with these from my work in terms of being eligible for affordable housing. So extremely low, very low, and low. Well, 1225 puts you with, I mean, off the, only at extremely low. Doesn't even qualify for very low in terms of income limits. So 1225 is a huge step in the right direction, but it doesn't get you out of poverty in this area.
A leadership position. It's a go-along position.
Yeah.
And that's not what Emeryville is known for.
That's right.
Yeah. Step out.
We have a very significant portion of our base here is sales tax, which is based on retail and, and restaurants as well, to me, and the hotels. So we have a significant chunk of workers in our town who work at low wages, cannot afford to live here. And we draw workers from across the region as a result. So I would like Emeryville to be a leader in that. And I know that staff will, of course, give us more information on those sectors as well. But I'm, I think this is a great opportunity for us to, to really take a strong position. So I appreciate all who came tonight to speak and gave us more information. Staff did a great job pulling together information as well, but I'm pleased to have all of that as we move forward and discuss it further. Thanks.
Yes. Go ahead, Ruth.
Just to direct staff as we, this is our first night to discuss this, so we're going to be massaging this over a few meetings. But I just wanted to let everybody know that I don't favor exemptions for nonprofits. I know Berkeley is giving nonprofit agencies a year before they have to comply. I know Berkeley is giving nonprofit agencies a year before they have to comply, and I don't, I don't support that, because if you're not able to be in business, then you shouldn't be in business. So, you know, it's just the cost of doing business, is being able to pay a living wage. So we have very few nonprofits in this one square mile city, but I don't fa, and many of those nonprofits are volunteer-run anyway, so I'm not sure how much of an impact that's actually gonna have on our nonprofits.
Well, if I could.
Go ahead, yeah.
I agree with what you're saying, Ruth, but the, the other thing I think that is imperative is that when we have this measure come before us, that it is as clean and as simple as possible, that it's not loaded down with exceptions and, and differentials, things like that, kind of like the charter.
Yeah.
The charter. We're a small city, we want something clean, simple, able to administer, and to do the job with the least verbiage possible.
Right.
Does, does staff have good direction on this?
Do you? We are very well-directed on this.
Okay. All right. All right, thank you, everyone who spoke on this item. We'll now move on.